All right, I think now we're good to start.
Okay, um, we have the agenda in front of us. I would like to amend the agenda to add a discussion of policy seventy-seven thirty. Mr. Edwards will have some questions about that. So if there is a motion to add that to the agenda.
I'll just make the quick motion, it won't take long.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we amend the agenda to add a discussion on policy seventy-seven thirty. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Dean says aye.
Aye, opposed no. Motion carried. So now we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second from Dean.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as amended. And are there any discuss, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed no. All right, the agenda is approved with the addition of policy seventy-seven thirty, which will be item number five. And adjournment would then become item number six. At this time, we've had the minute meeting, the meeting minutes. So is there any, my doctor's office wouldn't call me now. Chris, would you go ahead and read the minutes first?
I will.
Thank you.
Voting members in attendance, Ms. Evelyn Bullock, Mr. Link Dunton, Mr. Dean Edwards, and Mr. Bill Sharp. Agenda review. The Policy Committee Evelyn Bullock called the meeting to order at four oh one after establishing a forum. Evelyn Bullock, Link Dunton, and William Sharp were all present remotely. Dean Edwards joined the meeting remotely at four ten. The Policy Committee meeting minutes from May twenty-sixth were read. There were no corrections and the minutes were approved as presented. Tremaine McQueen presented policy seventy-five thirty teleworking for approval. A motion was made by Link Dunton and seconded by William Sharp to approve as presented. By a vote of three to one, motion carried. Link Dunton, Evelyn Bullock, and William Sharp voted yes, and Dean Edwards voted no. The following policies were presented for approval to take to the full board to sit for thirty days. Policy sixty-three oh six, policy seventy-two forty-one, policy thirty-one oh two, thirty-four seventy, forty-three oh five, policy forty-one ten, policy forty-one fifty-two, policy forty-two thirty, policy forty-three twenty-five, policy forty-three forty-five, policy sixty-three twenty-five, policy forty-two ten, policy forty forty dash seventy-three ten, policy forty-two forty, policy forty-five oh five, and policy seventy-nine hundred, policy seventy-five ten, policy seventy-five forty, policy seventy-five hundred, policy forty-two seventy dash sixty-one forty-five, policy fifty forty, and policy twenty-five hundred. The policy twenty-five hundred hearings before the board was changed to read three or more board members from two or more. There were a total, there was a total agreement to make this change. A motion was made by William Sharp and Sharp and seconded by Dean Edwards to approve the policies to be taken before the full board to sit for thirty days, the motion carried. There were policies that were approved for name changes only. A motion was made by William Sharp and seconded by Dean Edwards to take these policies before the board for, and to waive the thirty day waiting period, the motion carried. Policy, the Policy Committee adjourned at five nineteen P M.
There's just one thing for the record. That should be policy seventy-five oh five, I think you said forty-five oh five or something, but it's actually seventy-five oh five, just for the record.
Yep.
Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes?
Ma'am.
Hearing none, all those in, I will declare that the minutes are approved as read. The next item on the agenda is the policies, the new policies from, policies from the School Board Association. Chris?
Okay, so there is one new policy that we have before us today from the School Board Association. This is policy twenty-one twenty-seven, Board Member Technology Use. The information about this policy is in the memo. It's the first policy that is listed up there. And we have Tremaine McQueen with us today to give us the highlights of that policy and answer any questions.
Okay, good evening, board. Policy Board Member Technology Use for Policy Code twenty-one twenty-seven. And basically, the first section basically talks about how a board member should conduct themselves while using school system technology devices. You know, they are, you know, do things in an ethical, respectful, and supportive way that supports the duties of the board members. It also, also complies with our existing responsible use of technology form, well, policy that we have. And I'm very sure that you guys already use that policy. We already have that established for our school system. And it also talks about, if you look at section two where it says privacy. So it's saying here, just really don't expect a lot of privacy because everything that you do is a, a public record. And if you look to the next page, it's called E S I. That also means the electronically stored information. So these are public records and at the end, at any time, if there was any kind of litigation, then we have to make those, those, those files available. So what it says here, one of the things I wanted to point out is when it talks about the personal, look at section one, the definition of personal technology devices. And what it speaks about, it gives you a clear picture of what is your personal technology device. And that means any device that is not purchased by Mass County Public Schools is your personal device. So even with that, you gotta have, you still gotta be somewhat careful when it comes down to the things that you do when, in regards to work-related or board-related things. One of the things I highlighted in section two, at the E S I, board members should avoid the use of personal technology when conducting school system business to prevent conflict between board members. Interest in, in privacy or their personal technology devices and accounts is still, what is it, okay, and the school system's legal obligation to preserve certain school business E S I. So again, that means, again, that means any, any record or anything that you do on a personal device, when it comes down to any type of school-related business, it will be a public, that's a public record, and also known as E S I. The, let's go on to the section C, social media. Wanted to have my, yes, go ahead.
We had one person join us on a cellphone. If that person could state their name so that we can.
Donovan Chavis. Donovan.
Reginald Silver. Reginald Silver.
Thank you, both of you.
Thank you.
And we also just had Mr. Sharp join us as well. Okay.
All right, so going back to the E S I, the electronic and stored information. One of the things if I wrote here, if a board member, if a board member is, are expected to immediately transfer any school system related items. If you, let's, let's say if you receive an email or anything on your personal devices and it's related to board issues or school issues, then you should forward that, that information to your school-related account versus keeping it on your own account. Because it is a E S I, meaning electronically stored information, AKA public information. Going on to the social media, personal social media. What this speaks of, it speaks about how you should conduct yourself even on your own personal social media. It speaks to the policy twenty-one twenty, talks about the code of ethics for the school board members, and that's still in play when you speak with this social media.
Want to get her?
There was a question? Okay. All right, going on, if you look at page three. Page three, it talks about the guidelines of all types of social media use. And it gives you a list of do's and don'ts. And it pretty much talks about your personal, your online behavior, how you should conduct yourself there. And I'm very sure that we don't have those problems. If you go to the next page, number four. What this section right here speaks of is that we can't use Facebook or Twitter. Oh.
Oh, page four.
Page four, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So what it says is we can't use Twitter or Facebook to express like personal views from the board, from an individual board member. And it also talks about your personal accounts. And it says, let's see, I'll put it there. Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Reggie, excuse me for interrupting. Would you please identify yourself? I didn't get your name, I don't know who's talking.
I am Tremaine McQueen, the Chief Technology Officer here at Mass County Public Schools. And what I.
I did, I did recognize your voice, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, okay, no problem.
All right, thank you.
No problem, no problem. So it also talks about if a board member were to use their personal account, and because you guys are public officials, then how you, how you use your personal account is still subjected under this policy. And so what I mean by that, let's say that you post something about something school-related and there is a parent or somebody who responds to the post. So you cannot actually delete the comment because it was a public, as a public servant. This was a, a public post. So things like that can be looked at as discrimination and things like that. So it has a lot of guidelines in how you should conduct yourself in regards to personal social media and your, and even if it was a school, a school-assigned social media account. And this is pretty much it.
So what I'm hearing is, so what I'm hearing, we can post what we post in a personal account. But anytime someone reacts to it, it's gonna become public information. And you cannot, you cannot.
Yeah, let me refer to you to that.
Because I know, I know board members who on social media, not ours, but on Facebook, where they're issue going up like this, they're having meetings and they're addressing their constituents.
Right.
And they said, this is what's, what we're doing, this is how, I'll explain their interpretation to their constituents.
Right, so let me read this section right here. It says, board members should be aware that when they use personal social media accounts in their capacity as a public official and allow community, community members to post comments publicly on that account, then they may be created a public forum, which is, right, that's a public forum. All right, so, and then the thing is, if a public forum is created, then the board member must be careful not to engage in viewpoint discrimination. And that's like discrimination can be categorized like deleting a member's comment because the board member doesn't like the response or something like that.
So Lindsey, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the distinction, it gets really, it gets a little bit blurry, right? Because I mean, you certainly can still, you'll use your personal, your personal social media to post personal things. But I think, I think what this policy is intending to do is to put board members to kind of make sure that, that board members are aware that to the extent that you are using, to the extent you're using your social media account to communicate with members of the school, the school community, the school system community, and solicit feedback and have that communication. It, it's pretty fact-specific, right? So, you know, it would really depend on, on what the situation is. But typically, in those instances, you've got to be really careful because, like it says in the policy, you've created this public forum, right? And so, once you've created a public forum, then free speech, First Amendment speech rights start to attach to people who are commenting in that forum. And so, that's where you just have to be really careful. And again, like I said, it's pretty, it can get pretty fact-specific and it can get a little bit blurry. And so I think one of the things that board members should just be aware of, and what I like about this policy is it just sort of tries to lay this out so that you have those things in your head as y'all are engaging in, you know, in social media as, as we all do, right?
So Liz, I have a question, two questions.
Yeah.
First one is, where in the world are you?
Oh, this is, I'm, I'm in my house, but this is a Carolina Beach boardwalk, and I wish I were here.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna say, I'm coming, I'm coming. The second question is that basically, if that's the case, how long, sometimes you don't keep your posts up forever? Do you have to maintain that for a certain period of time?
I mean, I think that's a really good question. I mean, I, you know, that's, I think that gets a little bit, I think you're sort of in, I think it's really raising two questions, right? I mean, I think first is whether, if you're creating a Facebook post, say for example, you've created a Facebook post where you're actually communicating with constituents. I think there's a question about whether that's going to create some kind of public record. And, and if so, and I, again, I think that would be something we would have to, you know, kind of analyze on a, you know, situation by situation basis. But I think that kind of goes back to the other parts of the policy about whenever you're using your personal devices to communicate with constituents, or if you're using your Facebook, there's a possibility that you're creating a public record which needs to be maintained by the school system. You know, if, if you, I would recommend if you are engaging in social media and you are, you are soliciting comments from folks on school-related business, I would certainly not delete those posts. You know, I, I mean, I, I think that you're, you're gonna, you're gonna run into chat, you know, problems if you go back and delete those at some point.
This is Reggie, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I think it's very important that we be very careful not to be too political when you're making announcements, even when you're doing your feedback or making a post. If you're not careful, I think there's a very thin line there, that becoming very political and people starting to take sides. So I, I understand what you were saying with this policy. It's just something I think that we have to really guard against.
So do I. I'm Tremaine.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just gonna ask the question, I, I know these, I guess, if we get to that point, will be presented in August for review for thirty days. Do, do you think, I think our, traditionally, our, what we've done is, is just, I guess, presented the slate. Would, would it be good to have Tremaine go a little deeper with the board on this particular one? Maybe just to make sure everyone, not that they will not read line by line what we present for their review, but that they get to maybe hear it from Tremaine as well?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. So what we, what we can do is that we won't vote on this one today. And we can actually just add it to the agenda for the regular board meeting as an action item. And that way, it would be presented to the full board. Madam Chair, I like that idea immensely. Okay, but I have a question.
Do you have to have a motion to do that, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I said, Madam Chair, do you have to have a motion to do that or present that? How are you gonna do that for the meeting?
We do, but I have, we do need a motion, but I have a question. Well, before we do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Tremaine.
Yes, ma'am.
Talk to us a little bit more about the use of cell phones.
So.
Because I get, I get board-related calls. I try not to give out my cellphone number to the public, but I still get calls sometimes from board members and also a make call because it's convenient. So tell me about, about use of cellphone.
All right, there is a very thin line when it comes down to personal cell phones when you are using them for school-related or business items. That word right there, that E S I, we talk about that a lot, that electronically stored information. So like the lawyer said, those things that I have to make sure that I have access to that information in the case of litigation. So what that means, let's say that you get a text or, or, or something like that and it has to deal, is dealing with school-related or something like that. And it goes to court. So they may subpoena that, that information. And that is pretty much, I hate to say this, but it's, it's your personal phone. So in the, another policy that we had, we talked about one time, but that we really had far in it, it says that, pretty much, I have access to your phone so that I can preserve that information in the case of litigation. If that makes sense, so that's why.
May I, may I just then add something?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so, and I would just say, it's, it's not, not just for litigation, but also in the case of public records requests. So for example, if, if you've sent it, it's less about, if you make a phone call, but if, if you, if you send or receive a text that's related to public, you know, school system business, that's, that's a public record regardless of whether it's on your school system phone or whether it's on your cellphone. And so, if, if, if you all receive, the board receives a public records request that involves those texts, it can be really difficult and challenging to collect those as well. And so, when I've advised boards, you know, we certainly advise against that, but we recognize that that happens, right? And so I think there's a, there's a line in the policy about if, for example, you, you do create a public record on your personal cellphone, there, there is a, there's some, some advice in the policy or some requirement in the policy that you take steps to make sure that that record is sent to your school system rec, email. Like sometimes we would say, send those texts to your school system email so that it's, it's preserved somewhere in the school system, which would make it easier for the district to pull those records if they need to.
And that's exactly what I thought I read. So then, my, my next question is this, and Dr. Ellis, why is it that the system does not provide a cellphone to board members to conduct board business on? And then you won't have the necessity of being able to go into my private, private phone?
That must just be a practice here. My old district, it was offered, some of the board members were offered that, but most did not take it because they didn't want to carry two phones. But it's normally.
I'm sorry?
I mean, we get a flat rate, I'm assuming, I mean, we just get a flat rate of adding a phone. I mean, it's not a big issue on our end to provide you with a phone. But that'd be just a conversation we can have, but most. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's a conversation that, speaking for me, that I would like for us to have. And, and I, I, I think it would be left up to board members whether they wanted to take advantage of it or not. But I think it's, it's something that we do need to, to talk about. Because I, I think it's a good idea.
Ms. Boo?
Yes, sir.
You know there's cost associated there, right?
He just said they get a flat rate.
It's still cost associated.
If you got a flat rate for five hundred cell phones and you only use three hundred, you could still pay the flat rate bill.
Well, the, the rate of those phones is about, I don't know if I can say this, but it's about thirty-seven dollars a month. But after you add taxes and everything, it comes out to be maybe fifty or some dollars a month. And then. Our, the phones that are usually provided for our staff are the free phones. So that'd be just a, if you just would take the fifty-seven dollars possibly and multiply that times the board members, that probably should give you the, per month.
What are the free phones? The, the, the phone, I think what you're saying, then Tremaine, is that the phone itself is actually free, but we have to pay the monthly rate for being on the network, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir. For the subscription, yes.
Yeah, well. Oh, it's raining, Con. I'm sorry? Well, I think that's a discussion that is well worth having. I may be the only one, and if I am, then so be it. But I think we do need to, to talk about that. But at, at any rate, we will. Are there any other questions first?
Yes, ma'am, Dean has a question, going back to the post on social media, please.
Okay.
Lindsey, I think some of the board members would enjoy this part, especially this time of year, getting ready to go into elections. How can us as, as board members who are going into the election process not post our singular views on our own social media about board activities or the way the school should be run or how, how we believe it should be for the purpose of the vote? You understand what I'm trying to say? So how can we be limited at that point by this policy? It just seems that that does go against our free speech, especially when it comes to, when it gets into politics, which I hate to say it, but that's where we're in.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're limited, you just can't.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think policy is limiting what you can post on social media. I think the, the concern though is being aware that when you do post certain types of things, you have to be careful about the way that you, so if, if, for example, you post certain things that create a public forum, you have to be careful about the way that you might respond to comments by other people on those posts, right? So I think the specific example is if you have, you know, you post. So I think the specific example is if you have, you know, you post something about your particular view on that, that has to do with the school system and the, you know, um, you know, how something should go or how some, some decision should be made within the school system and you get, you know, twenty comments on it. Um you have to be very careful about not uh deleting comments because you disagree with those particular comments. Does that make sense? Um because at that point, those people who are commenting on your posts have a free, have the, the free speed, First Amendment rights attached to their comments. So that's, that's, I think, what the policy is trying to make members aware of, not necessarily to say y'all can't post this stuff on social media.
Lindsay, how does this uh affect um a separate Facebook page set up for um a campaign?
Mm-hmm. I, I mean, I think you're still because you are a public official, right? I mean, I think it may be different if it's somebody who's running for the school board, who's not presently on the school board. But because you are a public official right now, I think even if it is a campaign Facebook page, if, if you are, you know, soliciting comments or making posts or things like that, I think that I would be, I think I would still be very, very careful to, and be aware that I think it, it could be construed as a public forum.
Right. Okay, let me um say this to you all. It is thundering here where I am. Um it's not one that I know of, but if I, if I am cut off, that's where I am. And I guess we'll have to um reconvene at some point. But, but just know that it is thundering and raining pretty hard over here right now. Okay, are there other questions about this policy twenty-one, twenty-seven? Can I get a motion that we add this, I have the chair add this to the uh regular uh board meeting agenda uh for presentation to the full board?
Madam Chair, I move that we have this, this added to the agenda.
It's gotta be somebody on the committee, Donald.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, though.
I make the motion that we add this to the agenda for the uh August board meeting, for the whole entire board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Blank.
Blank? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we asked the chair to add policy twenty-one, twenty-seven um to the regular board meeting agenda for presentation to the full board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, no? Motion carried. Uh Dr. Ellis, can you, when you all discuss the makeup of the agenda for the board meeting, can you uh make sure that this policy is added there for um approval? As an action? Thank you. And we also have the vice chair, so thank y'all. I'm sorry.
I said I have it.
All right, uh Chris, uh for policy updates, um our next item.
Okay, so we've got two updates today. Um the first one, uh we have Danny Flyler um on the Zoom with us today, who is going to go over um some changes to the webpage development policy. Um thirty-two, twenty-seven dash seventy-three, twenty-two.
Good afternoon, board members. Just a few updates here as you go through that initial paragraph there. You see, we're just making a change to obviously what our new district website um URL is. Um no longer the NRMS K twelve, but the NCP schools dot net. Further down under section B, um C right there. Uh where do we get to? Yep, there we are. I'm gonna follow along on the one I've got on mine, just to make sure that I follow. Can you zoom in that just a little bit?
I can. I made that change we talked about, but it's optional.
Okay, great. Um we are not requiring teachers to uh create their own webpages as part of our own um district site anymore. Um and we're also not housing any of these sites locally or using a design software with Adlio, our new program. We don't do that. They house all that for us. Um and we do our edits through their server. So just that ended a change there. Taking out uh section F that was in there from, from that section as well. Yeah, so we were uh just removing the requirement of having the author's name listed there on the website and the date they were produced and revised. That's not an area that's, that's listed on our site anymore. Way for us to do that. So we're just removing that from the policy. And we're not actually including the link to the policy anymore on the F for the internal links from the site. So we're moving that from section five A.
However, that written technology accepted responsible use policy is in the policy mix still.
Just not linking to the website.
Yeah.
The bigger section there that's being removed is just related to external websites. Um we are obviously keeping that, not linking to any more things from the outside than we just aren't absolutely necessary. Um so we're just taking that out and uh monitoring that as we go forward. Those are pretty much the changes there. Oh, and we did uh the new site uh for accessibility. We do have a monitoring system within that that helps us as we create pages so that they are accessible to those who, from the Americans with Disabilities Act, we make sure that's updated as we go forward. And we're not showing any students, any, any student names at all within, within the website. I think that's all of the major updates there.
Are there any questions?
Hearing none, hearing no questions. Uh is there a motion that we no, I'm sorry, I'm jumping again. Let's do the next policy first, thirty-four, twenty.
Um the next policy uh has very few changes. The, the policy is um student promotion and accountability policy thirty-four, twenty. And we do have um Chad Thompson and Melissa Danzy Smith um on, on the call with us if you have any questions related to the body of the policy, which again hasn't changed. Um but Chad and Melissa, if you could um kind of share what the policy is about, maybe not line by line, and then the um the links, the two links at the end that were added.
Good. Good afternoon, board members. Um as Dr. Calorano shared, there are very minimal changes to the student promotion and accountability board policy. As you know, um the superintendent, along with principals, set the promotion standards for students. We have position plans in place for our act. Um we have a process for appealing promotions and retentions as needed. Um we have our reading camps in place. All other things have not changed. If you look at the hyperlinks, those things are specific to our um ESL students and the testing um surrounding those students. In addition to that, with, there were changes in the Read to Achieve law due to uh COVID nineteen. And those changes were primarily around the reading camps, the tensions. Also, um reporting requirements to uh the state board, which has, which will have to take place by September the first and the addition of the fourth grade assessment that should be given the first ten days of school when school opens to our fourth grade students. Mr. Thompson, is there anything else you feel like we need to cover?
I think you have covered it this time.
Are there questions? If not, is there a motion that we uh recommend to the full board um approval of policies thirty-two, twenty-seven slash seventy-three, twenty-two and policy thirty-four, twenty uh to lay on the table for thirty days?
So moved.
I make that motion, Madam Chair, that we put these policies on the board for thirty days after giving the board to make the approval. Three policy members that you mentioned, I'm standing up in my house right now, and I didn't get to the policy members. I heard them, but I, I don't remember them, I'm sorry.
All right, it's been moved and seconded uh that we recommend to the full board approval of policy uh thirty-two, twenty-seven slash seventy-three, twenty-two and thirty-four to lay on the table for thirty days. Is there any discussion?
Ma'am.
Hearing none, all those who say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? Motion count. The last policy for discussion is policy number seventy-seven, thirty. We've had this uh policy, so I will uh ask Dean if he will uh talk to us about um what he is looking for or not seeing in this policy that he would like.
So we'll refer back to uh Lindsay for a second, if she's still here. Hey, Lindsay, um again, I was gonna hit you up about some administrative codes.
Okay.
Um there's secondary employment administrative codes, and I just didn't know if those administrative codes in um twenty-five NCAC. Um if you need to know the exact one, I'll, I'll give it to you. But I mean, we're addressing secondary employment in this conflict of interest policy. But what I understand is most places, if not all, I, I'm just wondering everywhere I've known to work or seen, if, if you do secondary employment, people have to fill out a form and get it authorized through their supervisor. It looks like our policy is just letting the supervisor know that you're involved in some type of secondary employment without some type of follow-up. And so I was just looking at, do, uh I guess we're okay, cause it's, if this comes from the state school board, it looks all right. I just wanna make sure that we weren't falling in between the cracks somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. I, so the state human, so the, the administrative codes that you're looking at are the Office of State Human Resources codes, is that right? Title twenty-five, yeah. I need to look into it closer, but, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure that those I don't think those apply to the, the, to the local school boards, um because they're applying, my understanding is they, they apply to state administrative agencies. Um but, but let me, let me, let me double check on that, but that's my initial, that would be my initial advice is that I th- tho- those wouldn't apply. And so to the extent that secondary employment is something that can be considered by the board, the board has the authority to set um to set guidelines and policies for allowing employees to, to take on uh secondary employment.
Uh yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that. And I was just wondering, it's just like uh sometimes I don't know if we know exactly what these um staff members are doing in their secondary employment. And I just don't wanna leave open a gap for somebody to get something messed up on, that's all. I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So Lindsay, is that like if a teacher assistant worked with us full-time and then got off work around three and went to Walmart and did about a three or four hour part-time? Is this what this is referring to more than, or even if the teacher had a uh a part-time tutoring job at the boys and girls level or something? Is this what this is referring to?
Yeah, that's my understanding is that if you've got teachers or TAs that in their, in their own time, they wanna get a second job. That, that's my understanding that this is what that, that is applying to.
So with that, would the policy refer back to the principal based on who their supervisor is?
I'm, I'm looking at the policy now.
I do the same thing. I'm, I'm trying to think about another district I was in. So I know it used to go through the supervisor.
It does say the board recommends that an employee confer with his or her immediate supervisor prior to accepting non-school employment.
Cause there's a time issue that they have to fulfill their full-time stay with us.
I think that's addressed up here.
Right. And, 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 and on first, for sections four and five, so any of these, one through five are the ones that they cannot engage in, right? Four and five, they could potentially engage in those types of employments, but only if the superintendent approves it. But otherwise, my reading of the policy is that the, the um is it the recommendation that the employee confer with their supervisor, but it's not a requirement? But, but that the superintendent, but you all can establish reporting procedures that do require the employees to notify you all that they have accepted some kind of non-school employment. Not necessarily that they have to ask permission to do so, but that they at least have to report it.
But at this point, that's not what we do. Is that correct?
That is what the policy says.
And so, and, and here's my, here's my question or my process thinking with that is, how do you know? And, you know, what process is there? Is there a form they fill out to let their supervisor know? Because just like right now, we have a bunch of supervisors that are transitioning and moving around. And, you know, it's good if there was something in file that was signed and says, hey, we checked into this. This is employment that doesn't bring hardship on the district or bring ill repute to the member or um or to the school itself um based off of whatever that secondary employment is. And um it just lets there, it be known what that secondary employment is. And if it has to come up all the way up to the superintendent to be signed off on, then there's that process. And then that employee is secure by having a piece of paper in their personnel file saying, hey, this was checked out, I'm good. And that way, there's no question about it. It's more of a protection for the employee and the school system in and of itself, if there's that process in place. It's just a little bit more clean.
Actually, I, I stand corrected. So, so only four and five, according to our policy, require prior approval. All of the others require notification.
Well, no, no. So I would, I would just clarify that. One, one through five, so basically, one through five are the occasions where you cannot have those kinds of employment. However, so if you go back, if you scroll up just a little bit. So the way that the policy reads is that at, right now, the policy reads, you don't, no employee has to get approval for non-school employment, all right? They cannot engage in any of these five types of employment. However, four and five, they might engage in that if they get superintendent approval. Okay, um now the, the policy does contemplate that even though employees don't have to get approval ahead of time for anything that's outside of those five categories, that they, that the superintendent can't establish some kind of reporting procedure. So they may, the, the, the policy doesn't, doesn't require an employee to say, hey, can I do this? But it does say that you all, that the district could require that once they've decided to accept this non-school employment, that then they have to report it to somebody in the district. Now, you all could change that. You all could make it mandatory that they ask permission before they accept non-school employment. But at, at least the way the policy is read, is bordered right now, it doesn't
Question.
I think this, this policy uh that sent us, that is highlighted right now. that it's recommended that if I take a part-time job and I'm an employee with the system, that I let my supervisor know, but if I don't want to, I don't have to. And I don't think that most, that we would want to know all these outside jobs that these people have, so long as they are not violating one through five of the policy, simply because most of our people have second jobs, and that's a lot of paperwork.
Ms. Bull, you know, chair.
Yes.
I concur. I think when you look at what our teachers do and what our people do, and what we pay them to do what they do, if they want to do what they want to do, it's solely up to them, as long as it falls within the framework of one through five.
Right.
And the issue is, if it adversely affects employment, and the supervisor better, that's when they're gonna have to get involved, and that's what you're gonna want from us, anybody.
Right.
Ms. Bull, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Dean, I, I just, i- in, in looking at this, what is your concern, that, that we have employees doing things other than school-related jobs, or that we're just not documenting it and following it if something comes up?
That's correct, and I mean, I've seen it with my own eyes, with people who are working secondary employment jobs between hours of eight and three, right there in the middle of the day, and I don't know if they're doing it on their breaks, obviously, and especially now that let's just say that online learning has been going on for the past few months. Hey, they're, they're doing stuff that they feel free to do.
But I, I think, Dean, that, that's where referring it to the superintendent comes in, because if somebody's working when they're supposed to be on the clock, teaching or doing school business, then those persons need to be referred to the superintendent. We don't need to do the investigation, but I think the superintendent does need to do it and find out if it actually is what it appears to be. And if it is what it appears to be, then the superintendent should handle it. That's, that's really part of his job. But I do know that with the, in the past few months, people have worked different schedules, and even though we were in a virtual environment, it could very well be that the teacher had made an appointment after seven o'clock that night. And so they were doing something when one would kind of expect them to have been doing schoolwork. But if you're gonna do an hour of work after seven o'clock, I don't think it's a stretch to expect them, if they need to, to do whatever it is they would have been doing after seven o'clock between three and four. And I, I don't think that's the rule. I think that's the exception for somebody doing that. And, and I, I think that's something that the superintendent should be monitoring, not us.
Well, I, I think at that point, it's not necessarily, does this employee hold a second job? But to go back to what I think Dean is, is driving at, is it is negatively impact, or, or having a, an impact on their ability to perform their job with the school system. And, and I don't think signing a piece of paper, I, I don't know if this is the policy that allows us to put some teeth to that and say, hey, you, what, what, what you're doing outside of school, it, it isn't not enabling you to do your job.
I remember seeing something, and Steve helped me out with this, but I do believe, I remember reading something that the supervisor during the last few months were sup- the supervisors were supposed to know what their staff was doing so that they could document the time, not just free rein to do whatever it is you want to do. But I thought that there was supposed to be some guidelines in place. So my supervisor knew what I was doing, and if I'm not doing what I'm supposed to be doing, my supervisor should have called me in.
So I, that, yeah, I think that you're right, because I think when we have a teleworking policy in place, and when we start talking about how this new year is gonna look as a district, we're gonna have to be more accountable, but if you have some kids that are virtual, and they need something at five o'clock, there's gonna be some teachers during the day, they're gonna probably not be doing a lot of the virtual teaching, they're gonna be online later. So we're gonna have to figure out a way to monitor that. And we're gonna have a plan in place where we're gonna have student attendance, accountability with the teachers, office hours, all of that stuff is gonna be addressed probably tomorrow night, but, you know, I understand what Dean's saying, because in the new virtual world, it's gonna be different. And it definitely was for this semester, but we do have some safeguards in place now that we've kind of experienced this.
Interestingly, that Rod Malone had sent us a, a log and procedures in a signature form that supervisors and employees sign related to that teleworking policy. So we have those in place for the beginning of the year.
So I do think that will help, and if somebody is doing what Dean is referring to, I think that will allow us to check the schedule, allow the principal to see this and what's going on, and then we go from there, so.
And you wouldn't be able to do that unless somebody reported it to you. And, and if I see it, there's nothing I can actually do about it on my own. So therefore, I should be calling you and, and allowing you to talk to the person, look at the records, and, and do all the investigation that needs to be done.
Correct.
And we can't put that in a policy, not all of that. I think that follows your, your position, not school board.
Ms. Bull, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I would think, oh, that should happen on the principal level before going to the superintendent. Shouldn't the principal address that with the teacher or staff member before it goes that far up to the superintendent?
I'm, what I say is that we, as board members, should follow allowing the superintendent to have whatever investigation that needs to be done, to be done. We, as board members, need to talk to the superintendent and let the superintendent pass it down. I don't think I need to call the principal and say, you say, investigate this. That's not our role. Our role is to allow the superintendent to have that investigation done. And when we get in the middle of trying to investigate something, that's when things get really blown out of proportion anyway. So we definitely need to talk with the superintendent. Yeah, the principal's gonna have to do the work, but that directive should come from the superintendent.
Ms. Bull, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Was there something I said that made you think that I was talking about us doing an investigation? I'm, I'm very unclear where you're at.
No. No, that's just something that came across my mind in the conversation. And I do know that not you, and I don't think that's what you meant, but I do know that we have some board members who do their own investigation and then bring it back, and a lot of times, it's something that could have been handled really simply. But because we dig into it, as it were, where the superintendent can go ahead and, and, and get it over with, and it may not be something that we need to stir in. That's the reason I think board members, and I've been trained from the School Board Association, that the superintendent does the investigation or has the investigation done, not board members. We need to refer to him and let him do it.
I mean, what else we have, Ms. Bull? Is that the last part of the agenda?
Mr. Sharp, yes, it is, but we need to make sure we answered our questions and made our comments pertaining to this policy before we call for an adjournment. So, Dean, does this answer your questions, and are we finished with this policy now?
For the most part, there was one little wording issue, if you scroll down just a little bit, about a may somewhere, I think it should be a shall. I'm trying to remember exactly where it is. Hold on, right there.
Where?
The, I think it's the one dealing with no employee may endorse any book material, la, 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 la. I'm gonna change that to a shall. Just a thought.
This is our policy.
No employee may endorse any book, material, equipment, or similar matter to students or parents when that employee will receive indirect or indirect financial benefit from such endorsement.
You leave a door open with a may. If you change into shall, then they would close that door.
I, I think that door, I agree with you, but I think that door is already closed when we've already said to the fact that we can't sell to the system if we are going to receive benefit from it. That's already in a policy. Shall, I have no problem with putting that shall. That's just another place to put it. What about the rest of you on the board, on the committee?
I'm good with it. Good with the change.
All right, then, yes, change that to shall.
You can't say.
But it doesn't read right. It is not grammatically correct. No employee shall endorse. Uh, I do why the may is. We need to wordsmith that. No employee shall endorse any book. Whatever, okay, I'm good. I don't like the sentence, but I like the meaning of the sentence, so I'm good. Um, anything else, Dean?
No, ma'am, not at the time, but thank you for the opportunity.
All right, is there a motion being to change the may to shall? And present this to the full board for approval?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Uh, was that you, Bill?
This is Silver, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it was Reggie.
There, we have a motion and a second to change the word sha- may to shall in policy seventy-seven thirty. You keep moving on me.
All right.
Go back to where we were, please.
Okay.
Change shall, uh, change may to shall for employees endorsing in a book, et cetera. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dean says aye.
And who was the first aye?
Reggie.
Reggie.
Yes, ma'am.
And I say aye.
Bill says aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. So we will present policy seventy-seven thirty to the full board, or do we need to take this back to the full board? I think we do, but do we?
Yes, ma'am.
But we will take it back to the full board then, and it will, and ask the board to let it lay on the table for thirty days, because there's really no big change in the, in the, the policy except that one word. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Lindsay, you're smiling.
Yes.
Is that okay? Is it okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is there anything else to claim our attention? If not, I declare our meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
So, and the storm is over. It rocked our building. Our power went out over the Rocky Mountain Center. Oh, really? Yeah, and the building shook, so we left it. Yeah, it was bad. Goodbye, all. Goodbye. Thank you.